All right, welcome to the Town of Tingsborough's Planning Board Meeting for March 20th, 2025. We'll start with introductions.
I'm Pamela Berman.
And McClure.
Jeremy?
Oh, Jeremy Baldwin, sorry.
Tiffany O'Brien.
Steve O'Neal.
Dave Robson.
Chaz Doughty.
David Nader with TEC.
All right, first on the agenda, special permit, public hearing, One Industrial Way, Unit Three. Lisa Tenzar, DBA Dance Energy applicant for a business use special permit under Section 4.1 Use Regulations of the Tingsborough's Owning Bylaws, as well as the other permit relief as may be required for the operation of a dance studio advertised in the low sun March 6th and 13th, 2025.
Yeah, this is a new hearing.
I have a motion to waive the reading.
I make a motion to open the public hearing and waive the reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Dan Tenzar. I practice out of One Bridgeview Circle in Tingsborough. This is my wife Lisa. She is here for Dance Energy. She is looking for a special use permit. One Industrial Way, Unit Three, is the particular location she's looking to run a dance studio in an industrial area. This is something that probably has come before the board previously. There are other activities, other general uses, that are done in and around that area. Right next door to the unit that she's looking to go into with your permission as a dance studio is Social Kids. It's a social skills network type of organization that does well for young kids. Dance Energy is a dance studio, teaches jazz, tap, ballet, from the little ones all the way up. If I had to describe it, I would say it's a tiny, small, little studio. There are studios and, you know, there are big studios, you know, that may have eight to 10 employees. Those are larger. This is a small mom and pop operation. She's been running it since 1986. She's been doing it for a number of years. We won't get into the decades. But she's looking to run the business from four to nine, generally during the week, except for Friday, and then on Saturday, generally, it's nine to one-ish. Parking is available on the premises. I believe there's 33 parking spaces. We had to go out and count them. But it looks like there's 15 in the front, there's seven on the side, and I believe there's 11 in the back. I tried to give you a diagram of all of that, so you can see it. The landlord is kind enough to be here tonight. He's seated in the audience back here, Peran Sui Shani. He owns One Industrial Way, and he was kind enough to be here to support Lisa's petition. As far as trash, trash isn't really a big thing. With dance studios, you may have a bag a week, and it generally comes home. So, it is what it is. As far as the unit itself, it's roughly 1,200 square feet inside. It's mostly an open format. There's a diagram in there where you have like a small entranceway and then a conference room where, I guess, parents would be seated. And then you have the main studio area. So, the plan, if we're able to proceed forward with the special use permit, would be to put in a dance floor. I think we're on three or four over the course of her running a dance studio. Like I said, it's been a long time. But we were lucky enough to find this place, and the landlord seems particularly welcoming to allow us to join his area. So, I think I tried to touch on all the things that you might need to know, and I guess if you have any questions.
All right, let's start with Jeremy.
Sure. Thank you for coming before us. I was just curious through the chair, where are you coming from? Because you've been established for quite some time.
Yeah, so the studio right now is in Chelmsford, and I've been there since 2001. And it's time to move on, so.
Great. And so, one of the things I'll come at with some of these properties that have become, come before us with a special use in an industrial lot is just, we pay attention usually pretty closely with life safety on the site because these buildings and sites are typically made for industrial use. And so, it's not unusual to see dance studios of this nature or gymnastics go into buildings like this. But that is one of the things that I do focus on, is just, we do have Center Stage right down on this same type of lot on Industrial Way. So, it isn't the best situation, even for Center Stage, because there's parking out on the road which is falling apart. That's one of my big issues that I have with kind of this condominium association on Industrial Way to begin with. We have very heavy usage up and down this street. So, the parking, it's a tough, it's a tough parking lot because you're coordinating with the adjacent property that has quite a bit of traffic coming in at certain parts of the day, and that is also shared with the same time slots that Center Stage is probably dealing with, and your facility would be. So, I do envision some overlap of where the parking is delineated and how you navigate through there. Because it's not, you know, Center Stage has parking down in the back that's kind of shared with those commercial properties. And, you know, forcing people to really park out in the back of this lot, it's not the best to have, because it's quite the distance around into the back. So, I do worry about drop-off and pickup zone. And I just would be remiss if I don't mention the status of the road again, because unfortunately, I mentioned it during the, kind of our opening, open meeting yesterday, last couple of weeks ago, just the status of this, because we have so much traffic on this road coming from the Learning Experience, the coffee shop, and then the trash trucks up and down this road very extensively. Even the, even the storage facility creates a decent amount of traffic. So, I will, I get what is saying for the number of parking spots being allocated. Appears to meet it. I'll rely on our engineer to, I know that we, it was written down, but just taking that into account about where people are going to be parking and how they're going to be offloading and, yeah, just approaching it from a life safety perspective. That's it.
You said that your, your use of the facility would be off-hours from the other tenants?
That is correct. It's generally four to nine, and on Saturdays, nine to one, whereas most of these, I think most of the other occupants are contractors, and they, they're like seven to three, or seven to 3:30. That's what we've seen. Social Kids is a little different. Social Kids has, I believe, they have mostly day hours, but they do have a little, some night hours. Once again, as far as the studio itself, from what I'm told, and I am not there, I try to stay away from it, but there's a lot of people that come, they drop off, they go get a coffee, or go do something, and then come back and pick up their kids. That's what I've seen, and that's what I'm told.
And you, but you said you have littler kids? Do they still do the drop-off?
Most of my little ones are Saturdays. They get brought in by parents.
So, on Saturdays, people are likely to use the parking?
I would think so, but not all at once.
Okay.
David?
Nothing right now.
Chaz?
I know I'm going to kill your name here, but does Mr. Shoshani also own Three Industrial Way? No? Okay. I don't have any more questions either.
All right. I don't have any questions right now, but we'll open it up to the public. Before we do, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody here, for or against, would like to speak? Come up to the microphone, please. State the name, address for the, we'll let her go for us. Sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand.
Do we need a motion to open it to the public?
She did, she did a double.
Hi. Hi, I'm Kathy Coughlin.
Hi, Allison Bird. Sorry, I have no voice.
Voices are an issue today. The only, did everybody read I sent an email?
We'll read it into the record.
Could you please identify your affiliation and your address, please?
Sure. I'm Kathy Coughlin. I'm resident of Tingsborough, and I own Center Stage Dance Academy along with my daughter here.
We're at Three Industrial Way.
And we did send a letter to everyone here with our concerns, and our number one concern is that street, the holes and, because it's not a town. Is that a town street? I don't think it is. So, it's very difficult to have it filled in, and I know that our landlord fills it, fills the potholes in when he sees them, but, yeah, as best he can, and that's how we deal with those. But we do have like three, there's four concerns that we are, and it's nothing against having anybody, another dance studio in town.
Just stick with the concerns, okay?
Okay, we'll just stick with the concerns. Can I just, would you want me to read them? It'd probably be a better.
Whatever your concern is, if you'd want to tell us.
I apologize, I have little to no voice. In terms of parking, it is an absolute issue. It's an issue for us as well, and we have designated spots. Those designated spots are very rarely available. We have almost identical business hours, and when I say that we're One Industrial Way and Three Industrial Way, we are almost neck, not, we're not almost, we are incredibly next to each other, doing, you know, the same thing at the exact same time. So, that street is a, is a major issue. Drop-off is definitely an issue. I've had many parents come to my concern, which I have also brought to my landlord, as we know. We don't own the business. I mean, we don't own, we don't own the building, so we can't do much about that street. But it has become a significant issue with parking all the way around. There's a ton of businesses in the back. They don't just work those hours, unfortunately. They're there all day, and.
And at night, when they, when it's dark out.
Yeah, yep, the Harvey trucks come, and they're incredibly, and we have absolutely no, no problem whatsoever with any other dance studios. We love and appreciate the art of dance, but with it being so close to us within 400, it has a cause for concern with a little bit of confusion onto two dance studios in the same. And I know that they were talking about a larger studio versus a smaller studio. We are also, we are also a smaller studio. We are mom and pop. This is my, my daughter. I've been running it for the last five years. She's been owning it for 33 years. So, that's our, kind of our main concerns, that in the large town of Tingsborough, we used to have about six dance studios. Now, there's just us, and that we'd be on the same street would be a little bit of a concern for us, and, you know, within 400 feet, and the traffic coming through all at the same time with as limited parking and availability and everything we have as once. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I just feel bad that she can't speak that well. But pretty much, that's, that's the concerns we have. It's like the, the, the traffic on the street, and, and the studio being less than 500 feet away from our studio. We're just wondering, is there some type of a cluster rule that you don't have businesses next to each other that are so close? I mean, it just seems like, it's just a lot of same, and we, you know, it could be, you know, it could have, it will have an impact on the both of us because there'll be, I don't even know how to say it, but it's almost like, you know, having, having this studio next to us and having, having to have to, like advertise more. So, you know, if a parent walks up to the studio and say, oh, which one do we go to? They're so close together, we don't know. And then we don't want the business to go to another town because they're like, oh, I don't want to go in there because the door, we don't know which door we're supposed to go into. It's just very inconvenient, and it's concerning to us. And like I said, it's not like we, and like she said, if you could hear it, sorry, it's not like we don't want another dance studio or businesses in the town. It's just right next door to us. Is that, and it's exactly the same business. We teach exactly the same thing. So.
Business hours, that's it.
And so, do we have any, do I have any questions from anybody here?
Yeah, I do, actually. One, you have a sign on your building for your dance studio?
Well, we have a sign on our door.
Okay, so you have this sign. All right, that's it for now.
I don't know if signs are allowed, are they, at the beginning?
Yeah, probably a whole different.
Yeah, that's a whole different.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the record, Ms. Coughlin did send a letter, which will be our bio. She's here speaking, so I'm gonna not read through it at this time. Anybody else, sir, who'd like to speak?
This is Seo Shansi. I'm the owner of the building. I come here to show my solidarity for the potential tenants. It's heartwarming to learn that people, there are still people who do things by the book. And for me, it's very encouraging that they've petitioned to get permission to move in. But now, as I listen to the conversation, centered around parking, I've been owner of this building for 20 years, and I've watched when Center Stage was in this building, and now that Social Kids, you're dealing with young adults who don't drive, who are driven, they're dropped off, the parents leave, they come back after an hour or two, and they stop shortly just to put the kids and go. There's never really a need, per se, for a large area of parking. But I'd like to assure everybody that the place is well-lit. You know, we've gone out of our way to make sure that there is plenty of floodlight parking all around the building. And the property is always maintained. Snow is removed. The sidewalks are always, you see the cement. There's never, especially because you're dealing with young kids. So, as far as I am concerned, the parking issue is not an inconvenience in any shape or form, in addition to being a large property and having at least 41 parking spaces in around the, and around the building. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, sir. Sir?
Excuse me, sir.
One, one question.
I didn't catch your name, but I appreciate you coming here tonight. Could I ask you, you said you're the owner?
Yes.
Could I ask you one thing? Do you guys have a condo association or something set up to maintain that road, since it is a private road?
No, I.
Is that something you plan on working on?
I'd love to find a solution for this. It's a voluntary effort by individual occupants of that area, that we fill in the, the couple of potholes.
Yep.
And then we watch the trucks. By the way, there was question of traffic and so on. The traffic is, in the morning, working hours. Around four or five in the evening, you never see any, any traffic related, you know, it's, it's just.
Okay, but you, you don't have, you don't have an association set up right now?
Don't have an association. We all.
Is that something you guys would be looking into?
Beg your pardon?
Is that something you could look into for us, being a property owner?
I'd love to find a solution. At the moment, it's a voluntary effort by individual.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead.
I just.
Nope, up to the, up to the mic. State the name again.
The situation with the road is, I know a few of the people at the end have filled in a few potholes, and my landlord has filled in a pothole, but I think he would love to get together with Peran and discuss if we could get them together. He would love that, to discuss the, you know, maybe the division of, like, doing that, because the road is a state road. That's all I.
That would be good. Maybe you can put them together for us. Thank you.
I would love, I would love to do that. We have tried, but.
All right, well, we don't, we don't want to get into personalities.
No, 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 no. I don't want to do that, but that.
Gives us the opportunity to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doors wide open. I, I guess it's going to come back to me to speak. I did read your letter. There's nothing in our bylaws that say you can't open up a competitive store, retail, or dance, or whatever. You, I'm assuming you have a special permit for your dance studio, correct? And, and I'm assuming there's other special permits down there. I get the road, but I do know how dance studios work. Drop-off, usually the younger kids and pick up, but the hours that they're at, they're not there in the morning when it's busy. Your building is, like you say, four to 500 feet away, okay? Theirs is up front, if I'm not mistaken, and there's a, I believe, a business on the right, which is the kids, and a business on the left. Which is that business? Thermal? Thermal paint, a G.
Thermal.
So, I've been in there, and there is, yeah, there's cars, but there's plenty of room for kids to get dropped off, I think, and picked up by their parents. I, I don't, you know, I wish I could stop the competition, but we have two pot shops sitting 500 feet away from each other. And as far as I'm concerned, that's the aware of, that's the only business in this town that's regulated by distance. I don't see a problem with competition. You've been in business for 30 years, you said. I'm sure your students aren't going to be jumping over. You get new students coming in. I'm sure they're going to know the difference between the name of your dance studio and Dance Energy. So, you know, I, I just, and I'm sure you have an established business, as Ms. Tenzar does too, for 30 years, in Chelmsford, I believe, or wherever, Chelmsford. So, you know, competition's good, in my opinion. I don't see that being an issue. As far as that road, we're not going to solve the repair of that road tonight unless it opens up communication between landlords. People are filling in, people aren't filling in. Shame, you know, the town doesn't own it, but yeah, we are concerned. In fact, Jeremy had said, he spoke last meeting, and we actually are gonna request information from the police and fire department to see if it's an issue for them going down that road to force the condominium association to fix it. So, I, I think that would, you know, go a long way for maybe some of your, you know, your other concern. They also have islands there, so when people drop off, I, I know people aren't dropping off young kids in the roadway to run over the island to go to the studio. They're walking the kid in the studio, and I'm sure they do it to yours, too. But as far as competition, personally, competition's good. 30 years in the business, I don't, I don't, you've been in competition with a lot of dance studios for years. 500 feet away, 400 feet away, if it was right next door, I wouldn't see it being, you know, a problem. You know, you, you have kids that dance, they, they're going to love you, and if they don't love you, they're going to go somewhere else regardless. So, I, that, you know, in my mind, doesn't plague here. I'm glad the first step's been taken to maybe work on this road that isn't Ms. Tenzar's fault by any stretch of the imagination. You've been there 30 years. You would think that you would have more of an answer of, you know, from your landlord, why isn't this road fixed? You know, you, you could have worked on that for 30 years. And I get it, it's hard dealing with people that own property that don't maintain it, you know, but I don't think that, as far as I'm concerned, we penalize a business that wants to come to town, low-impact business that wants to come to town and pay taxes, fill a vacant spot. I, I don't know. Like I say, the competition in my eyes is good. The roadway, hopefully, you guys can work on it, but I, I don't think that that's a reason to penalize a business that wants to invest money in our town. But Ben, you've been down there. Did you speak to any owners or draft a letter or speak to the fire department or?
No, they don't have a condo association, so communication is tricky right now. I mean, if there's a way to reach out now that we have a line of communication open, I think that would be easier, but there's no official condo association to hold accountable.
If I, if I may, can you come back up to the mic for one second? You, I'm sorry.
Peran.
I'd kill your name.
Peran.
Peran.
Peran is the first name. Yes.
How many, I guess, owners are involved in this? Do you know, I can't?
No, honestly, I couldn't tell you.
Are they all individual?
There is one Industrial Way where there are seven tenants in the building. There is three Industrial Way. There are multiple tenants, but I couldn't tell you how many.
All right, so.
Then the truck association, they bring something in and out. The traffic starts at 5:00 or 6:00 AM.
Nope, nope.
Ends about noon.
I, I just wanted to get a little better picture if we could probably help both dance studios, if, if she's lucky enough to come to our town, to get the road fixed. So, I guess I'm going to ask you if you could probably reach out to the other owners, because we're going to reach out and try and take care of the issue.
Absolutely. I think this is one additional reason to work together with the owner.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That was it. Jeremy, anything else?
I mean, again, I just wanted to really reiterate a solution for the, the parking situation, just as drop-off. I know that the studio or the, I can't remember what the other one is on the corner. They have like a drop-off zone. They put cones out in front to secure that area, and obviously, that's a makeshift solution to, for a drop-off zone, and this will just add to it a little bit. And so, I guess I, me, I would appreciate some thoughtful process on how that situation works. If there, and I can't recall, Ben, if you could pull up the parking layout one more time, I guess, understanding where accessible parking spots are and if that is part of it. We do have a few spots out in front that are always taken up by the geothermal company on the left, and so, you already start off at a negative there. And so, are, are, can you depict where there are accessible parking spots at the moment?
Yeah.
I don't know if, or maybe our engineer, if there, if there's any, any, any research on where the accessible spots are located?
All around the building.
All on the back?
Yeah, they can park anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that, that just, accessible is my, my issue, like.
So, so, from what, and what I'm hearing from Jeremy, and correct me if I'm wrong, if, if, if it's all right with the landlord, which I'm sure it is, maybe you could set up some cones out front there to make it a little safer for people to drop them off on drop-off days, especially Saturday mornings with the young kids, so it's safe. You know, we don't want to take up a spot to put up cones either, but they, from my understanding, the other tenants have to drive by that building, and there's an island there, correct?
There is an island that separates the street from that front parking area.
So, you're not dropping off in the street.
So, we're not dropping, we're not, yeah.
So, you'll pull into the front of that drop-off, and somebody can go get a parking spot.
That is correct. But, but I think the suggestion is, well, and the suggestion makes sense, is certainly, if, if there's any risk, we need to eliminate that as, as parents ourselves. Yeah.
Right, right. All right. Sorry, Jeremy, didn't mean to interrupt, but.
I have no further comments.
I don't have any other comments.
I have no other comments.
No, I'm good.
All right, anybody else in the public, for or against? Okay. Anything else you'd like to add or?
No, but we will certainly work with the present landlord, and we're kind of doers, so we're not bashful. We will. We will reach out to all of the owners and I think there's five or six from my count and try to coordinate. They got, there has to be a solution to that because the condition of the roadway is horrible.
And, and that's good. And hopefully Ben and we, you know, we talked last meeting about sending a letter to the public safety. So between the police and the fire, so, you know, they can, safety issues. If there is a problem, we got to make sure the police and fire can get down there. That's not on either dance studio, but that would go a long way to help the dance studio that's been there 30 years with a road that's broke and a new dance studio coming in to have a nice roadway. So with that said, Chad.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing not?
I'd like to make a motion to approve one industrial way, unit three. Map 21 parcel two B dash zero for Lisa Tenzar, DBA Dance Energy for a business use permit under section 4.1 of the Tinsborough zoning bylaws, as well as any other permit relief as may be required for the operation of a dance studio.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Aaron, one, four, one, motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, try to keep our town planner informed on that road progress.
If you want to email me.
I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to you by email.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck. And I'm sure you both can survive there. Especially if we get help with the road from the landlords. Yeah? All right, next up, site plan modification discussions. Five industrial way. How you doing?
Good evening.
We're talking the same industrial way.
Yeah.
Do we have an owner here?
Looks like we have someone that's going to chip in for the road.
Jump up and, and say that you guys are all going to do it.
Rather just say to you that I've worked with Bill Mitchell that owns three industrial way. And we, he supposedly reached out and.
Well, you know what, and that's fine, you guys can work on that.
We're trying to work it out and get it done. Cause it's a nuisance.
Good.
And I'm in the process of building the building, so.
Oh, condition it to that?
What's that?
Condition it to, it depends, let's see what's, what do we got?
You're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, I'm Brian Malisi with Haley Ward. We were the civil engineers on the project for C and G Realty Trust, Guy Ferretta with C and G Realty Trust. So we are here to ask for a minor modification to increase the size of the approved building on the site plan located at five industrial way. What I tried to do with this yard is to show you the, uh, the approved footprint of the building, which is kind of in that light line, if you will. It's got a little bit of a jog out front. The original building was approved at 14,600 square feet. Mr. Ferretta would like to revise the size of the building to 18,000 square feet. A rectangle 150 by 120, which again is shown in the dark line. Try not to confuse it with the concrete apron that I show around that, but it's the, it's the rectangle that's inside of that. This board may remember, and if they don't, I will try to refresh your memory. But during the original approval process, we in front of the ZBA for a front yard offset. This is in the industrial zone. The front yard offset in that zone is 100 feet. Because of the shape of the lot, because of the, uh, the beginning, if you want to just scroll down just a little bit there, Pam. We are on the radius of the cul-de-sac that's there. So by putting a hundred foot offset, it kind of squeezed us on the lot a little bit. And so we went to the, uh, the zoning board of appeals and were approved for variance to 80.6 feet. And so what I did try to show is the corner of that building, even the revised building stays at that 80.6 feet from the, from the front yard. So we're not incringing on any of that variance that we were once afforded. The dark line that shows here is was the approved edge of pavement. So this building is actually being increased, but it's not increasing any of the impervious area of the lot at all because it was all going to be pavement up to the building and around the building. And by increasing the size of the building, we do not increase any of that impervious area. We do have a valid order of conditions. We checked with conservation commission. Mr. Ferretta had started the project, if you've been down industrial way. He started the project, he leveled the lot. The lot was kind of a little bit of a mess. It was full of boulders and whatnot. He's done a tremendous amount of work. He started to build the retaining wall that's in the back. He stalled a little bit when he got a little bit busy. And now he's back trying to get this thing fixed, done, and get his business moved into there. I probably forgot more things than I told you. I apologize, but I'm here to answer any questions. But in a nutshell, that's the minor modification we're, we're discussing tonight.
Just, how much is it being enlarged, 3,000?
3,400 square feet.
Jeremy?
I think we all like to see this project get off the ground. Uh, it's been there for quite a, I, I've, man, when you came before, it's probably like, what, five, six years ago at this point?
But we, uh, we had a little complications and during that period of time with everything. Covid and the non for that. So we want to move forward very quickly, so.
And I guess my understanding of the project, I just wanted to remember, think, make sure I remember it correctly. I, I thought there was a vegetative buffer around the building, but maybe that wasn't the case. I know we show the, the building footprint, but I'm just curious if, if you can expand, expand upon any other changes that are in the plans from the original, like you're seeking.
There are zero changes from the plans, other than that increase of, of the building size. At the time, uh, we had asked for and received waivers from the conservation commission to work within the 50 foot no, uh, no structure zone, as well as the 30 foot no, uh, no disturb zone. And so we had, we had received waivers from that during the time. Lot is, is, it's 3.1 acres, but a lot of it out to the north of, you know, planned north was all wetlands. And so the billable area, I apologize, I don't know the exact number, but it was a lot less than that 3.1 acres.
This is the previous plan that has, this is the approved plan.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That's on record. And it's, it's showing the, um, the buffer zones for conservation.
And so again, like I, to reiterate, the edge of, the proposed edge of pavement does not change from the approved plans to this modification plan.
So it's just the back being blown out?
No. Actually, if you go back, it's actually so that you could see where there's a bump out, if I may approach the screen, if that's okay. So again, this light line here is the original building. Now we're bumping a little bit in the back and mostly to say play a bust here. Create a, create a larger rectangle, remove the, remove the jogs out of the front of the building and just kind of a little bit more building here. Could you put up the? Chris. Thank you. I'd point out that the corner of the building, the furthest corner of the building here only changes by about a foot and a half. Just because of the radius, you can't just take the building and slide it over. We would have encroached on that 80.6 foot. And so it just kind of moved on a little bit of a radius, but we were, we're no closer to the, uh, the conservation buffer zones than, than what was already approved.
I guess my only, my last question is just, this is a crane company or a crane assembly company, right? Is that correct?
Crane service, yes.
So is there any concern or, I, I guess if you could explain just the flow through the site? Cause I know that you've, you've expanded that, that right corner. Just making sure that this all works with your operations. It's not impeding upon any truck turn radius over at that corner.
Nope, it really doesn't. So I mean, again, parking's laid up in the same configuration. We have 12 spaces here. The trucks, I mean, the cranes are about 45 feet in length. And so they would come in, it would be a stage here, but they come into the overhead doors into the building for service. We could create an aisle. And again, this is a concrete apron, apron that will just save a little bit of wear and tear when the cranes come in and out. So we have plenty of room for maneuverability in and around the building. So it really, although we, we did encroach a little bit here, we still have plenty of aisle. It, it, it doesn't affect any of the maneuverability.
What is your pinch point over on that back corner right now? Just curious if that.
Over here?
Yeah, that.
It's, it's 24.
24. Yeah, that's all I wanted to know. I wanted to make sure that you weren't taking the vehicles, the crane vehicles around the, the backside. Makes sense, it's opposite direction that you go in there, but I think that was always in the original plans anyways.
We're, we're actually going to access from that front corner and be on this side. That's just a road to get around with vehicles.
Does increasing the size of the building change any of the parking plans?
We're going to find out when we get to, does it? Have you had a chance to look at it, Dave? This is just up for discussion, correct?
So you answered the question, I know you allowed somebody to check it, yeah.
Dave hasn't seen it. So I think you're here for minor or major modification.
This category, the parking calculation is done on, by the number of employees. And with the increase in the size of the building, it's not going to increase the number of employees. Mr. Ferretta only has about five employees, but we, we sized everything, figuring there might have been 10 employees in there. And so that, that number hasn't changed and I do not believe the size of the building affects that. Mr. Ferretta's business is such that most of the cranes are out on site. So even the crane operators wouldn't come here every day. They would go to the site. And the odd occasion that the crane doesn't go from site A to site B, it may have to come back here. In the interim, that's where the cranes would be stored. So for the most part, it's going to be Mr. Ferretta and, and one other employee at the site most of the time. And most of the other guys would be transient in nature with, with going from site to site. But in a long, long winded version, I do not believe the size of the business, uh, building increase affects the park.
I have nothing.
No problems yet.
Was the apron, it, it's, it's listed as 15 to 17? What's it going to be or why is it listed that way? And was it on the original plan?
Uh, the concrete apron was not on the original plan. We were just going to pave right up to the doors as we were going and, and Mr. Ferretta came and, and wanted to increase the size of it. He said, oh, by the way, I think I'm planning on putting a concrete apron, just again to save wear and tear from the vehicles kind of going into the building at all.
They're heavy, they're heavy.
So there's no curbing or anything, it's, it's just flat?
It would be flush and that's.
Okay.
I almost didn't include it on the drawing, but I just want, you know, it'd be flush. It'd really just be driving up to the, to the overhead doors, no curbing or nothing.
Okay.
So it's not a walkway, it's just instead of hut top, it's going to be concrete?
In the very front of the building, it'll, it'll serve as a walkway and a transition from the, where the people would park.
Yep.
As a transition to get into the, the front door, if you will.
Yep.
But all around the other sides of the buildings, it's really just for, you know, wear and tear. So the pavement doesn't bow or end up getting, getting, you know, bow at the driveways and it just will maintain that, so.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may to the board, being in construction, this is definitely a better option than the hut top.
I, I agree.
They're multi axles.
Lot more money too.
Lot of weight, yeah, and it's on his dime, not ours.
No, that's true. All right, um, I guess we might as well hit it, see, it was the topic of conversation for a dance studio. Now we got big trucks coming in, no little kids. What's up with the road? Any idea, any clues on fixing it? Well, I'm actually working with three industrial way to do something about the road. We tried to approach people, but I guess Harvey doesn't want anything to do with it. So it's probably going to be out of our dime. I'm willing to do it and he's willing to do it, so. If all else fails, it's on us. I mean, there's nothing else you're going to do about it.
Now, is, is this one, the furthest one in the back, uh, condo?
His place is.
Yeah.
Oh, Harvey is, Harvey is.
Harvey Industries is the end of the road, all the way up. They have a fairly good sized facility. Guys, Mr. Ferretta's would be a standalone building. And then three industrial way has a seven tenant, five or seven tenants in it, yeah.
Well, as of tonight, it sounds like one industrial way would be interested in helping you with this too, so.
Right, we, we'll, we'll put them up against the wall this time and see what he says.
So there's no.
I, I got some background for him.
There's, there's no condominium association, then, correct?
I have no idea what they do.
No idea, you guys just own.
I think that, oh, in our place? No, I just own it, yeah.
All right, well, um, I guess if you're looking for.
No, yeah, I was just, so I, I met with Colin a few times to kind of like look at different courses of action from the last time we spoke. And yeah, so there is no condo association there. So it's great to hear that you guys are willing to participate in this.
Absolutely.
And I was actually going to, it's funny how this all kind of played out that everybody was from industrial ways here tonight. But, um, yeah, I was going to bring up, you know, fire and police were the next option. But if there's a more, you know.
Already talked about it and we were waiting for the rain to, you know, the frost to come out of the road. And we're going to, we actually have someone lined up family paving that gave us a quote on it. So that's our next move before, you know, but we're waiting for the frost to come out of the ground.
So I guess let me get back, so you are going to pave it with the?
Not the whole road, we're going to fix all the potholes.
All the potholes, okay. All right, so that'll be done, the potholes on the whole road are going to be done?
Well, as far as to my property and his property.
Right, and but, but to get to yours, you're going to go through.
Harvey's is another thing.
Mr. Chair, with the way the site is set up, everybody in all the buildings to the right, the storage, and then the last place on the left, they will all be part of Mr. Ferretta's repairs to that road. So they'll all benefit from it.
Do you have a timeframe, just so the board can know? For the road repairs, I know you probably.
Well, first I'm going to go and see if we can get some help from other people.
Yep, no, I, well understood.
So you're looking at a couple of weeks there for answers to come back and forth. We'll think about it, you know how that goes.
Yeah.
And then probably within a month, it's within a month, it's going to have to, you know.
They're going to do it with or without them, then, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
All right.
We've already talked about it and temporary filled in the holes with dirt and, you know, so we're on it.
All right, um, so what are you guys looking for from us tonight?
Uh, well, again, we'd like a, a, a minor modification rather than have to go, uh, open up the entire hearing and whatnot. We do think it falls into the, you know, the guise of a minor modification. At the beginning of the, the process, I guess, if you will, Mr. Ferretta went and visited with the building commissioner. And he certainly suggested we come back to you guys, uh, which is, which is what we're doing now. Guy would, he would have to provide a building permit plan to the building commissioner showing the new size of the, uh, of the building. We'd be ready to do that so that he could grab his building permit. He's been working with the, uh, with the building company. They're just waiting for a thumbs up so they can finish their engineering, so that the steel can be, you know, ordered and delivered. If you've been out to the site, there's still a pile of, uh, of processed material. As soon as again, the weather allows, Mr. Ferretta's going to get in and start spreading that, kind of getting the building pad ready. And so now it's a matter of how big does he get the building pad ready for? So we would like that minor modification so we can continue on with the larger building size.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. I, I don't, you, you know, I'm actually happy here on an industrial night. I, I hate to condition you to fix the road, but you seem like a gentleman and, you know, your word.
It is what it is.
Word is, so no going too far there. So you know, by the time you get, you know, and like I say, minor modification. We can't really hold you to fix the road, um, but take you for your word that you will. But here from the board, minor modifications or major modification?
I, I see it being a minor modification and I appreciate yous coming in to explain yourself. And I also appreciate you being willing to, if not get everybody else to do it, fix it yourself.
We're going to take care of it.
Every single business on that street and I appreciate it.
Especially the big trucks coming in, you know?
Oh, they busted up.
I know your vehicles are relatively inexpensive, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure you're not really worried about the.
Worried about a flat tire, probably costs more than my car, right?
Really, for a motion then?
I'm looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the site plan for five industrial way is a minor. I'd like to make a motion that the site plan for Five Industrial Way is a minor modification, and that we would approve that as planned dated March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, with the, you're gonna come back with the drawing to us so our engineer can see it.
Yeah, what I'll do is if, I'll provide a stamped drawing. Obviously, this one was on stand.
But we wanna make sure for the parking and stuff, so we'll go, if the motion approves with the.
Condition.
Condition that the engineer approves that it comes before this board and we sign off on it, so that, you know, we're at the right distance, there's all the parking spots, and we have a final approval. All right?
Do we have to come back to the board or are you gonna?
You will for one night, or just the engineer will go over it, bring it back to the board for a final vote. Whether you have to come in or not, that'd be up to you if there's any real issues. Okay?
Yep.
So.
So the motion, then, is that the site plan review for Five Industrial Way would be viewed as a minor modification by the planning board.
Do I have a second?
If I could, just before the second, I just wanna say I agree that this is a minor modification, but I don't wanna set a precedent for other industrial sites to say, hey, this was approved as a minor modification. As a, because it's the square footage, this is a unique situation. I think we all look at these individually and what they represent. This site, and the individual use that it has, this is the reason why I believe it's a minor modification and not a major, but if I was to compare this to another site that would come back to us, we would look at it as an individual basis. It's not a wholesale, just because it's a certain square footage. So with that, I will, I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none with the condition that the, our engineer gets a copy of it. I don't know if you're gonna need any fifty-three G money for him to review the plans of.
There might already be something.
Yep, but that's, you guys can work through that detail, and then when the plans are completed, the engineer will put it on for a hearing, and good luck to yous.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Good luck with the potholes, Forrest. Get on it.
Remember, I'm up early.
All right.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion to continue Fifty Westford Road to our next meeting on April third.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. All right, Asbilt four nine nine Potash Hill, continued. I think that's the most continuance for an Asbilt, but we'll get there.
I missed the first one.
We weren't blaming you. Go ahead.
Darrell Wickens, owner of the Tingsborough Sports Center. I think when we left last, there were a few items on there. The stop signs, as you can see, those have been put in, five of them. I'm waiting on the please be considerate of our neighbors sign that had to get made, so I'm expecting that next week. We'll put that in the road. The trees, this, when I was, I didn't quite understand the issue with the ninety-foot. I see what happened. Now, where the fence was put, as you can see, was right along the lot line. When you talked about those trees cut over that silt fence, that's on Diane, I'm not sure of her last name, Diane's property. She had asked us to cut some of those down because they, some of them were pretty big and overhanging her house, so when the tree cutter was in there, he cut those down. We didn't stump them because, as you can see, she has a rock garden in there. Wouldn't be, it wouldn't have been, made sense for us to tear them out. They would have made a mess of a rock garden, so. So as you can see, there's no room. I'm not sure how they were placed on the plan. It looks like they were thirty or forty feet apart, but reality is that they can't be. They couldn't have been put in that forty or fifty-foot.
And you worked with her to take down trees, so she obviously is the only one it would affect, correct?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, she still has a fair amount of trees there, and when it's green, when they're green, it does, it has a lot of cover. But she had no issues. We couldn't get any machinery in there. We couldn't, there was no space to plant them where the fence was. So that was the issue. I think the number of trees are back there. They're just on each side of that. One of the pictures I think I sent you showed the other side, yeah, so the trees start down at the end of the fence. This is the opposite side, so Diane's house is on the right in this picture.
All right, so all you're waiting for is one sign?
One sign.
For the neighbors. Be respectful.
I think that was all.
Was there anything else with the fence? Was there like a section that was fifteen, like a fifteen-foot section?
Went from the right to the left, to the left to the right.
Gotcha, gotcha.
On the other end.
And then did you get the lock unfrozen?
The law, the chains are up. I think I sent a picture of the yellow, the yellow chain in one of them. Yeah, on the right hand, the.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
I think, I mean, I don't have an issue with it. The sign. We'll condition it. The engineer just going out and seeing the sign when it's up.
That's fine, yeah.
If that's all right with the board, and, but before we do that, I'd just like to, somebody make a motion for the.
Does it have to begin the condition?
Minor.
Can Ben take a look at it?
Ben's.
Yeah, either Ben or whoever.
I don't wanna force him to come to town.
To see a sign. Yeah, Ben, you can.
Yeah, he can go see a lot.
It's a nice-looking sign.
Yeah, whoever.
Nobody will, nobody will read it, but it's a nice.
Suggestion.
Anybody else have anything to say before? Can I get a motion for a minor modification for the fence and a few little, the tree issues?
Fence and tree.
And what else was it?
A motion to accept the Asbilt.
Yeah, the Asbilt and maybe a minor modification because the fence was twenty-five feet and a couple of trees were eliminated or pushed out, moved.
Go ahead, Jim.
I just.
No, I think by accepting the Asbilt, then we're accepting the changes.
The conditions, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the Asbilt for four ninety-nine Potash Hill.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing, any objections? Hearing none. Good luck.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
You should add on to that building again, just a little bit. Go to the bank for us.
No, they're done with me.
We could use some extra tax money.
I have hit the max.
It's a beautiful building. Good luck to you, for real.
Take care.
All right, modification to definitive subdivision plan seventy-five A Long Pond Road, map thirty parcel two-one. Michael Maynard, application for a modification to an existing definitive subdivision titled Martina Estates, as approved on March eighteenth, two thousand and four, and recorded at the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds Plan Book two fourteen, Plan twenty-seven, advertised in the home sun, March sixth and thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I have a motion for the.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the butters list and the legal ad.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Hearing none. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Roberto DiMarco of the firm of Foster Walker &amp; DiMarco. Beside me is Michael Maynard, the owner of the property here in Tingsborough. Thank you very much for having us tonight. The matter before you is a subdivision that was done twenty years ago. The Maynard family has owned property in Tingsborough for the last eighty years plus, and the property was subdivided over the last eighty years at different times. And one of the subdivisions, the last one, that resulted in the property that is owned by the Martin, I see Ms. Martin here tonight, resulted in a, you'll see on the plan, prior circle that was put in place, but the circle wasn't long enough. And so there was an inability to access the property. There was also not a maintenance plan in place. And so after some small disputes between the parties, in order to kind of work through this, they've come to an agreement as to what could be done in the area so that Mr. Maynard could access his property that he inherited from his grandparents. And we are here today to ask your approval to that extension of the roadway, the private way. This would be subject to an easement agreement that we are currently finalizing with the Martins, so that there is a maintenance agreement in place. We understand that there are, according to the engineer's report, things that are missing, but we didn't go all the way down because we are only seeking to extend that roadway to gain access to our lot. If the lot then goes on to be buildable, which is what we would be seeking in the future to put a house there, then we would be back in front of you with a more definitive showing of the lot utilities, topography, et cetera, because we would need that all to be laid out there. This is just to allow Mr. Maynard to really to access and to have a legal lot here in the area. The family has had the property for eighty years. Mr. Maynard does not live in the area. He is, and in full disclosure, he is looking to potentially sell it. He's examining that as a possibility. He's examining the possibility of keeping it. He's going back and forth with his family about that, so there is nothing definitive. We will be listing the property to see what happens in terms of the market and what he plans to do, but anyone needing to build this is gonna need to lay out these issues before they can get a building permit to be on this lot. I am here to answer any questions that I can in order to help this process, and thank you for having us tonight.
So it's a gravel road now that's there? And gravel, so before it gets extended, you'd have to come back to the board to see whether we'd allow gravel or have it brought up to speed?
That would, that, to our view, that would be something that an occupancy permit would require. You're gonna have your building inspector look at this. When he goes to issue the permit, he's gonna say, I need access. Fire department, I imagine, is going to have their say on access and safety. We, based upon the engineer's report, based on the health department's review, based upon what we've heard from the other departments, it does not appear that there are concerns about those issues and safety access at this time.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
So this is, I'm trying to understand the way this is done with the subdivision rules. I guess if this was just a single lot, it could essentially be an A and R, and this would create the frontage requirements for Lot E one and also access to the others. I guess I'm just trying to put the pieces together about how it is because is it, are you actually proposing to now repave or put new gravel down in this cul-de-sac? Or is it just strictly to really delineate property lines at this point?
At this point, it's to delineate property lines. We're going to enter into an easement agreement with the Martins, and that's gonna lay out some of these issues in terms of, but right now, we're thinking that it is gonna be a gravel. Pursuant to that agreement, it's gonna be a gravel cleared area so that fire access can make it through that cul-de-sac, that it's gonna be out, cleared out. This is going to be for a single-family house eventually, is our, is what we anticipate, and we don't anticipate this being an undue burden on that easement. It's just gonna be a house. The only way to actually access this land, without this, the Maynards don't have access to their property, and the Martins have people crossing over their land, so it becomes this constant conflict, and we'd like to get rid of that for everybody.
So for right now, it's just about the extension of that roadway to get the lots to fit with the frontage requirements and the subdivision rules?
That is correct.
Okay. And, yeah, I'm all set for now. Thank you.
So the new lot is Lot E one?
It's a pre-existing lot. It's been existing since the last twenty years, but yes, that's the new designation of it, so that we change the frontage of it because we've now added the circle and taking some land from both lots.
So you'd said if it becomes buildable, is it wetlands?
No, there's, we don't, the wetlands delineations were further up into the Martins going up into the left of this from what we've seen. But before that person would build, they would have to come before your conservation commission to make sure that they don't have for either a determination of applicability or to make sure that they're outside of any buffer zones.
And to extend this, will this require that you take down trees in order to extend the road?
There are trees there, yes.
Good, Dave.
Basically, all you're looking forward from us tonight is to agree that you guys are looking to extend that road, just move the cul-de-sac back. I don't know what it figures out to be, two hundred feet, maybe?
That's correct.
Somewhere around there. Put down gravel like it is now. Nothing changes.
That's it.
Okay.
So I'm trying to figure out which is the Martins' property.
The Martins' property is to the left. You can see the house.
Yeah.
And then it goes up and it curves dog legs around.
So the twenty-plus acres is all the Martins?
That's correct.
Okay, and E one is?
Mr. Maynard.
Mr. Maynard's. Okay, so and Mr. Maynard, long-term, is looking to put a house in there, and the light-colored circle is existing.
That's correct.
And then, but yet there's no access?
No, so when you look at the old plans that were done twenty years ago, I, not having been before you before, I don't think any of you look like you were all here back then, but it was, it was a, it was a circle that was put in, but there was no connection between that lower right corner, left corner of the lot and the circle. The circle was actually further away from that, so the Martins had a buffer around their property, around the circle, before you got to the land of the Maynards, which meant you'd have to cross over. Having no frontage at all, we're required to come before you to fix that.
Gotcha, okay. I understand.
What's that extend the, I guess, the roadway to, the distance total?
Total on that is approximately, so it's one thirty plus the additional, so you're looking at about two hundred altogether, two thirty?
From Long Pond to the end? Oh, you're adding two hundred and thirty.
Sorry, adding two hundred, adding two hundred, so you're doing about three thirty.
So you.
Because the radius of that circle, oh, one minute, I'm sorry, I'm making a mess of the numbers.
Beginning of Long Pond to the end of the circle, what's that give us? Is that three hundred and thirty feet?
No, 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 no.
Much more, right?
From the, from Long Pond, oh, I'm looking at the wrong thing, yeah. So, yeah, you're at least at three thirty. Sorry. Three fifty.
Did you look at it?
It's less than the maximum.
Maximum that we have, so it's less, what's, less than six hundred?
It's five hundred.
Yeah, that's all I was trying to get at. So you looked at it and checked it?
I'm a lawyer. We don't do math well.
Yeah, these guys do. It's gravel now, so would it continue being gravel unless you come back to?
Well, they go into a permit, and they're also gonna have to abide by the agreement that we entered into with the Martins.
We made that part of the conditions.
So how many people are gonna, how many houses are gonna have access, just the one, two, three, fourth right now, correct?
That's correct. You have the front one, in front of the Martins, you have the Martins.
And then if the Martins ever come in for an extension or whatever, they're gonna do, that's up to them, right?
That's correct.
And they could do that now anyways with what they have, so. All right.
When you say you're gonna remove the existing right-of-way.
Yes.
What are you gonna do with it?
Well, the Martins, I'm sure, are gonna wanna landscape that area and make sure that it's to their likings and where that circle is currently. It's right in front of their home.
So is there, there must be a driveway that's not shown on this, or are you using that now as a?
The driveway isn't showing. Our driveway goes from close to that.
Okay, so, all right. So you would extend the driveway out to the new circle or the new road before the circle?
This would be gone.
Landscape.
The driveway complete.
Yeah, and then landscape all around it or whatever, okay. Any idea what kind of landscaping you would do, trees or?
We have a lot of trees. They're all coming down because of the wind, but.
Twenty acres worth, right? Twenty acres worth of trees, right?
Okay, I have, don't have a question. Dave, have any, uh?
Any?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Do, do you have the old, um, subdivision plan?
No.
If not, that's okay.
You've seen it, right, Dave?
Yes, yes. Um, overall, um, everything seems, seems to check out. Um, it's more just documentation on the plans, what, what isn't included, that's required to be included, which, um, was mentioned. Um, there is a wetland down, um, Lot One A. I think the entire parcel slopes down. Um, if you go all the way to, actually, if you go all the way down, um, to the bottom of this, uh, PDF, I believe, is where the old subdivision plan is, that kinda shows you the grades of everything where the wetland is. Um, one concern, or maybe not a concern, but just, um, how, how close to the wetland this, uh, ends up being. Um, you know, you had mentioned going, or not having to go in front, or going in front of Concom. I'm not sure what, um, you know, how, how close to the wetland. Yes, that's the perfect one. Thank you, Pam. Um, um, you know, it in, it increases gravel. Obviously, it increases, um, semi-perbious. It's not impervious 'cause it's not paved. Um, and I'm not, I'm not worried about stormwater. It's just more of like a general housekeeping. Um, you know, dotting, dotting your i's, crossing your t's type of deal, but.
It's more like a driveway farm, basically.
Yes. So, but overall, um, both lots check out. They meet, um, zoning bylaws. Uh, the subdivision, or the, um, cul-de-sac while extended is still, um, less than the maximum allowed. That's all I have to say.
All right, anybody from the public would like to speak? How's that? Hearing none. Um, wishes of the board. I'm okay with it. Need a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Um, another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, modification definitions to the subplan for seventy-five A Long Pond Road, map thirty parcel two-dash-one. Michael Maynard, applicant for modification to an existing definitive subdivision titled Martin Estates, as approved on March eighteenth, two thousand and four, and recorded at the Middlesex North County Registry of Deeds, Plan Book Two Fourteen, Plan Twenty-Seven, advertised in the low sun, March sixth and thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, with the conditions that the Martins and the Maynards come to an agreement with the easement.
Right, it's going on.
Right, it's going, yep. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Nicosia has already given me the draft. Um, he and I are working on it. We should have it done within a matter of days.
Now, we might want to change.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, with the one condition before going on record. All right, it's null and void.
Understood. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Good luck.
Thank you.
Maybe welcome to Tingsborough.
All right, we have, let's go on, zoning bylaw amendments. Let me keep Dave here for this. Pursuant to general laws, uh, chapter forty-eight and five, Tingsborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM at the Town Hall, Community Room Twenty-Five Bryant Lane, Tingsborough. Mass amendment to Tingsborough bylaws with the following proposed changes. Six A, the review of the amendments in addition to section ten-point-two Wetlands District and section ten-point-three Flood Plane and Floodway Districts as they relate to the new firm and FIS maps effective July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, and six B, the review of amendments and additions to section eleven definitions.
Be two separate?
Okay, two separate.
So it'd be throughout together, right? Because like, um, it's, it'll be done separately, right?
No, they can, they can get one.
Is Condon even at three to three? Yeah, because I thought Condon said he was at three.
All right, yeah, they're three.
Got anything?
Yeah, um, so, do you want, uh, some context on just what the floodplain bylaw update is? So, um, I've been working, uh, with Nadia from FEMA. Um, basically, there's nothing crazy. There's no, um, language updates, really. It's, it's primarily just, um, updating the dates for the firm's maps. Um, a few of the addresses or a few of the organizations listed in the floodplans aren't listing their current, uh, physical address anymore. Um, so it's just removing the address. Um, and tha, that's basically it. There's a few zones in town that aren't relevant anymore, um, for the floodplanes maps, so those are, have been removed as well. Um, and those are the three changes. So it's basically just removing, um, physical addresses, updating dates for the firm's maps and taking out some of the things just that aren't just relevant anymore to the town.
Jeremy?
Uh, so this is just Article seventeen and eighteen is what the, this affects? Uh, sorry, I'm just looking at, so we're reviewing.
Six.
Yeah, it's six, but I'm just reviewing these two documents in front of us. It's Article seventeen.
Oh, yeah.
Article seventeen, eighteen, it, yeah, I mean, it's just kinda boilerplate stuff, it looks like, right?
Yeah, just copying and pasting from the state language just to be compliant.
Yeah, so, and, and added in bordering states if affected. Nothing big, so, okay. Just wanna make sure I understood.
No, thanks for sending these ahead of time. Appreciate it. Um, and this just brings us into compliance with what the state is mandating, right?
Yeah, that's, that's literally all it is.
Nothing, no.
All right, um, you need a vote or?
Yeah, so I believe we have to, it's, um, ten-point-two and ten-point-three, so I believe, um, you have to recommend them both separately for town meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, um, make a motion to recommend Article seventeen zoning amendment, section ten-point-two Wetlands District to, uh, Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the war, as a warrant article for a town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Along with Article eighteen, right?
We have an.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Do I have another motion?
So are we gonna discuss eighteen or not? I'm just, just real quick, do we have, it, it talks about, uh, this new map that's going into effect. Have we seen the new map yet?
I don't believe we've had access to them, no.
Um, Emily has.
Yeah.
We have, we have the, the, uh, the draft versions of them, yes.
Yeah, the draft, but the final version's not published yet.
We've had them for, for a wa, oh, not a while, but they, they, I think it's been at least a year, I wanna say, that they, they sent out the draft ones. I can't, I can't remember. They were preliminary.
They don't have a final map that they're using yet?
Well, they're, they'll publish it in July twenty twenty-five, so yes, that's, there's a final that's.
So are there additions to the floodplanes that they're adding or subtracting or do we know?
I.
I wanna say adding. I'm trying to see if I have the drafts.
The lot, the, I mean, the floodlines are kinda minute looking. It's hard to know what they tweaked. I'm not sure which zones were changed and how mu, by how much.
I mean, I know we have, we have the.
Is this something we can hold off till it's done?
No, we have, we can't.
Next meeting, we gotta get it done now.
It's just, it's just aggravating that we don't have.
I agree.
Well, we have them.
I don't think it's a fault of theirs, right? Because you're saying the state doesn't even have it finalized, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not a fault to, to our boards.
But we're not necessarily approving a map.
No.
Right? I mean, we're more approving the language.
I hope not.
No, but I, I mean, we're really just approving the language that meets state regs.
Approve the maps.
Right, yeah. It's, so we're insured, basically.
In order for us to get insured, we have to comply with the mapping and.
We need insurance.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend Article eighteen zoning amendment, section ten-point-three Flood Plane and Floodway Districts to be put onto the town warrant for the Board of Selectmen.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
And, uh, as soon as I get the maps, I'll send them to you guys as you want, or when they get really, the final version gets released. And I can send you the drafts as well if you wanna look them over.
All right. Um, all right, moving on. Asbeld four oh five Middlesex Road, continued from three-six-twenty-five.
So there is a.
Wait a minute, you haven't, you haven't done the section eleven definitions of the zoning bylaw.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Go back to six B.
Yeah.
Um, can I get a motion on the definition section?
ADUs. Um, yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so, um, the zoning review committee, um, added the definitions of ADUs, um, basically just, you know, copied and pasted from the state. Um, in addition, there is, uh, Chaz was involved, uh, many updates to, um, different definitions, kind of adding some more context and just, you know, modernizing some of the language, uh, to make it clearer for interpretation.
All right, do we get a?
Yeah, I mean, basically, it was just to update some of these, um, it was really kinda low-hanging fruit for the zoning bylaw committee. We had a few extra bucks left, so it's like, all right, what do we wanna do with it? This seemed like an easy thing to do. Update some of these, make them compliant with mass law mostly and some things we didn't even have a definition for, but yet we had language in the bylaw that needed it. So that's what this is. So I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, we don't know what the article number would be, but the zoning bylaw amended section eleven definitions to the Board of Selectmen for, um, inclusion in the warrant article for a town meeting.
Second.
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 All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Now we're moving on. Asbeld four oh five Middlesex Road, continued from three-six-twenty-five. You're up, I guess. Anybody?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Were the applicants notified of this?
Yeah, so that's, that's kinda what I was gonna bring up. So I think there's a, a miscommunication internally over the, over there for them where, um, they got the April third public hearing and I believe it was related to, um, Doug Duchin. And I think he interpreted that as he doesn't need to be here for tonight. So we, we spoke on the phone. He was not notified by his team that he, he was expected to be here.
So they're looking for a continuance?
So they, they, um, submitted paperwork to modify this, their, a special permit, uh, to, to reflect the changes, um, in the as-built. And the public hearing for that is April third.
Okay, so we'll see him on April third. Okay.
So we need a motion to?
No.
I know they're gonna have another hearing.
No, there's, there's a whole new public hearing to be, to happen on April third.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, moving on. Uh, Fifty Westford Road, please be advised, applicant has requested to continue this discussion to the April third meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, continue Fifty Westford Road to April third, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Hearing none. New business topics that the chairman did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Anybody? Okay, hearing none. Looking for a motion?
All business?
All business, I'm sorry.
So what happened to Ninety-three Kendall Road? They were supposed to be here tonight? They were continued to this meeting?
Yeah, they submitted, uh, a request to continue to April third as well. They haven't, um, been able, they, they didn't get their phasing report, um, completed, so they won't be able to come tonight.
All right, so do we need to make a motion to continue them to April third or they're not on the agenda? So that's why I'm.
Uh, you can.
Okay, I'll make a motion to continue Ninety-three Kendall to April third.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion passes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Good night, everyone. See you, Dave.